A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the agenda? Anybody have a change?
Yes, I have a change. I'd like to add the draft minutes for our board meeting July 17th. Board meeting for which day? June 19th.
June 19th.
Forget it. I will send it. This thing stinks.
Alright, I guess we're ready for our public comments.
So we have a remote and an in-person audience, so I'll just explain the rules real quick. Working on putting up the public comment policy, so just make sure you're familiar with that before making any sort of public comment. If you are in person, raise your hand. I'll give you a microphone. If you are remote, use the hand raise feature on the screen. Should be somewhere on the bottom for you, wherever you are. That'll allow us to acknowledge you and then you can make a public comment. It'll be first name, last name, and town of residence. Alright, I'm not seeing anybody right now. We do have a second comment section at the end of the meeting or toward the end of the meeting, so that's another opportunity.
Okay. Alright, thank you Nick, and let's move on then. We don't have a student representative report tonight. So, let's move to the superintendent's report.
So, the summer has been moving along. Quite a bit of work is being done, certainly in facilities. That's more if you were to walk through the facilities. Primarily the Jaffrey Grade School and the middle school, high school. That's where you can see a lot of the work kind of in midway or midstream. So if you were to go to the second floor of the high school, for instance, you would see the cords hanging down. You would see them trying the holes in the walls where they've been taking away the unit ventilators. And today, I know they had a crane over there and was putting some of the larger rooftop units on top of the building, so that's exciting. So we're continuing to move forward there. Both the floors, the gym floors in the Pratt and also the Jaffrey Grade School have been refinished and have their new mascots. Well, JGS is not a new mascot, but it'll be new for them because they had never had their mascot on their floor. But the high school mascot is now on his floor, so it should be ready pretty soon to go on there and take a look. Also, the stage there where they do the performances, that was also sanded and redone as well, so that was good that the entire place was. I think they will get their new bleachers in about mid-August is what we're hoping for. Sooner?
Closer to the end of September, if not right way after.
Okay, so closer to September then. Okay, that's fine. And so, that is what's going on there. The daycare program, the rooms do have their flooring done and the door between the two spaces. They're now working on the area out back for the playground, so that's just, we're in that need of hiring for those roles. We do have one or two people who have applied to some associate level roles, but we need to do a little bit of a better job advertising, I think, for those positions. We do have quite a bit of interest in that. The elementary principals and assistant principals, administrators, the four of them go and leave tomorrow afternoon and will be there for two or three days in Boston for a conference. They're going to do a couple of things. One, just take some professional development on some of the initiatives that we're doing within the district, but also for a time of bonding and gelling with this new group of individuals. You have a new principal at Jaffrey Grade School and of course, David moving from into a different position, David Fraser, moving into a different position into the elementary and making sure that everyone's working collaboratively. That's going to be very important. The middle school, high school staff, they're doing a lot of work as well, certainly updating some handbooks. I think every school is in the process of that at some level. And also, making certain that they're looking at some of the practices that they've been having, primarily around the discipline, looking at discipline data and finding, can we take those next steps to being more restorative in nature and in our practices? And then, I would say, from a standpoint, if you were to walk around the schools, you know, this school is probably a little bit closer to being cleaner and ready to go. We have another month and so, so I would not be too concerned. We need a little bit of painting in some spaces because we've had some work done here. But the schools that have the majority of the cleanup that's going to have to take place would be then, the second would be the middle high school. Certainly because of the high school HVAC work that's happening there. They are going to get some new flooring for the front of their area as well with a mascot on it, which is, should be nice. And then JGS has a lot of work. We have over 60% of the staff moving different positions. I went around, I was there today, going around, marking, getting rid of lockers, getting rid of, you know, perhaps desks that should have been gone a while ago, looking at curriculum materials where we can put them in a better place for people to access and so forth. So there's quite a bit of work that needs to take place there and we've just been labeling and marking and trying to make sure that that's all situated. So, a lot of physical work that needs to take place there for the school year to start, and they will need the month in order to make that come to fruition. And then Heather's been doing a great job hiring people for, as you see on the consent agenda, for the fall athletics. That's, you know, we're not too far away from that starting up pretty soon, practices and so forth. And also, we've been doing some work, grant writing with, and I say "we," really the, myself and a couple others, to get some STEM initiatives in place, trying to also get a grant for the middle school sixth grade. So the RMS fifth graders from last year, the JGS fifth graders from last year, trying to do an overnight trip that we would present to the board for the early part of the year that would be paid for through Title IV funds. I'm still working on the language around that with Department of Education to make, see if that can happen. It's an allowable activity. It's a matter of how we assess it. That's going to be important to see if we can get that done. And that's for the purpose certainly of science education and hands-on learning and doing that before really going into the school year. I would say it's also just as much about bonding two groups of individuals who have not been together, together early on in the course of the year so that they can have a much stronger year in middle school. So it's part of a middle school transition plan. We'll see, you know, if we can get that done, then we'll assess it, see if it works, and if it does, maybe we'll continue on with something of that nature. And if it doesn't, then maybe we'll do something different in the future. So, summertime, but still a lot going on.
Ruben, can you give us a little bit of an update on the plans for the career and technical education?
Sure. So we have a Route 202 Steering Committee. That Route 202 Steering Committee met on the, I guess, a week ago today. And we are working on a communication plan and Juno and I have been working on some of that. We have some draft language up. We have to do a little bit of refinement around that, add a couple extra pieces at the end around some of our own advertising and then what, how the community can be, sorry, community can be involved a little bit more. We intend to have a good draft that we can send out to this week to the committee to get more feedback. And then, you know, earliest at the end of this week, we would be able to get it out to the community. It's probably looking closer to the beginning of next week, to be honest with you. Yes. Actually, you have an update on that?
Yeah, so we're currently about, I would say, 80 to 90% complete on the newsletter. We're using a very similar template to what we used for the budget news and the voter guide, so that it's easy, it's something that people know. Most of the sections have been written. It's kind of just fitting things in their correct place, making sure we have the right spots, trying to add some different photos and things like that. We've already reached out to our printing company. They have enough paper, they're ordering paper so that they can accommodate this. We're working on all those things so that once we have it ready, we can send it to them. They can print it, we can pick it up, bring it to the post office, get it out there early. And the intent behind it was just to start having a really basic conversation about the CTE project, some of the Route 202 components, and just to have that piece of information that people can look at. And then we have more strategies for, as we kind of continue through the process, you know, some postcards perhaps, some other information so that we can ultimately just keep people in the loop in different forms and ways and utilize this new newsletter template that people seem to have enjoyed. So, we should have a template or a draft of the newsletter finalized by tomorrow. It's just a few things I needed to touch base with Ruben on, a couple other small things, so.
Yep. And we, I and other people can attend as well. On Wednesday, the architect is meeting with us at noon at the SAU, but we'll be going over to the Route 202 site so that they can walk it and see it and not just imagine. We did have a meeting last week also with the architects where they were giving us some information from some digital drawings that they had had from Google, but really wanted to have a better understanding of, for instance, the access road and other elements of the property to see what was feasible, what was not feasible. Certainly expense is something that they're concerned about and where, like, good building areas are. And so, they think that there's some really wonderful, on paper, it seems wonderful opportunities, but, you know, sometimes wonderful opportunities with great views. You've got a lake on one side, you've got mountain and that, not on the other one, you're up there a little bit. There's, you know, there's some terrain that you have to think about. And I know that the Route 202 Committee has been really very specific about making certain that while we might be thinking CTE programming right now, thinking about what else might we be able to do in that area? And if we think about even conceptually what other types of buildings or parking or fields or anything like that that we would want in that area, it might impact how we do the land excavation and so forth, so.
There's a couple of things if I may.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. I'm done, so we go over to the chair.
So Lisa and Chris are on the committee, and so they've been involved with both the architect and with the Route 202 Visioning Committee. So there's kind of two processes going on. One is to, and the main one that we're focused on now is the Community and Technical Education Program. And our hope is that the stage is going to step up and provide SAU 47 with a good chunk of renovation money so we can do the things we've talked about, the cosmetology, the culinary arts, et cetera. The Visioning Committee is looking at not only that CTE program, but what else could go on that property. But the study that Ruben's referring to, that the architect is doing, is really based around the CTE program mostly. The communication that Nick and Ruben are planning to send out is just an initial communication to alert the community that we're working on this and looking at the CTE program, but that there are some other concepts out there that we're looking at down the road. Outdoor education, maybe solar, several other things.
We would also be rounding out that communication with some concrete pictures and statements about the work that has been going on, that the community has already supported us with relative to HVAC projects. Certainly, we know that there's, for instance, there's a sign out here that's new and we've already shown on Facebook the Pratt floor, but we can, you know, talk about a variety of upgrades that have happened or are in the process of happening. And so, it does kind of gel in with the theme of taking care of our facilities, making sure we're doing what's best for the educational community and also saving money for the community down the road. So we're taking care of what they have while also saying, "And we have these other possibilities."
So, just, it's sort of a big moment because as we look at this study, the architect is looking at both the current site, where we have our Building Trades Program, as well as Route 202 site. So it's not determined yet which is the correct solution. On the other hand, having talked about the new programs that we would like to do, if those are funded, if we can obtain funding, we suspect that the current site is not going to be adequate to do that. And so, this would be opening the door to first, an important usage of that property and it would be a decision point. Basically, where we'd be saying, "We're going to use this site and develop it as part of our district." And the last thing I'd just like to throw out there, it's really good to have Chris and Lisa involved, but with this communication and because of its importance, I'd like to suggest that other board members also have a chance to look at it and, you know, provide input if any, you know, appears to you.
For instance, at the Solar Subcommittee meeting, we were having this similar discussion and the point was emphasized that the, we should really communicate to the public that the CTE building would be a benefit to all learners and be accessible whether or not they attend our schools, as long as they live in our school district. Doesn't matter if they're homeschooled or charter school. And so that point is a good one to make in the newsletter so that people see that this is.
Private school, homeschool, charter school, they're all going to take advantage of this facility if it is.
And I know there is a contingent on the committee, and I think it's well kind of represented. There is a contingent on the committee of people that don't, that are seniors. You know, and they're interested, and I don't think we've confirmed anything like that, but they're interested in like the possible use for seniors as well, whether it be after hours or things like that. So, it's another kind of group that is important, right? And it's willing to help, and I think their, their main concern is the overall vision, right? They care about the town. They want good things for the town. But getting them on board with the CTE is important as well. It's just a good first step.
That was going to be my thought. I thought we had discussed, I didn't think just seniors, I thought community members. So just kind of, I see it more like, obviously bigger scale bubble-ish type stuff where everybody gets to go and use the rubble.
Yeah.
And same thing, same idea.
The architect has discussed that a little bit, that these kind of facilities can be multi-use because schools run during the 10 months of the year. On the weekends and the evenings, the building can be focused for community use.
And one of the things that I liked, I wasn't able to attend the meetings with the architect, but hearing that the way they design them, they're kind of flexible and adaptable, right, for changing needs. Let's say, you know, we were to choose these programs now, you know, there was a point in the future where maybe, times change, right? 20 years from now, it might not be the areas that we want to be interested in. So, designing that sort of thing in, I think would be important, and I like to hear that they're headed in that direction, right?
Yeah, we're definitely in an age of.
Different CTE or use for something else, you know? Who's to say?
The architect did mention that in his review of the mapping information that's available, that the land is steep in certain parts. And what the, what the Visioning Committee addressed, which includes Jeff Barkavan, who does do land development, said, you know, depending on the size of the project, working with steep land isn't necessarily an issue. You can, you know, build roads, you can level out steep land. Problem is if you're just doing a CTE, it's limited, you know, you're limited to how much you can spend. So there's a lot of things to think and to think about. And on Wednesday, I'm not going to be able to attend. I'm going to be on vacation up in Canada, so I regret that. I'd like to be there. But if anybody is available, we've been out to the property a couple of times recently, but this is going to be, I think, a more comprehensive walk because the architect has already reviewed parts of the property that we have not visited, you know, this year.
Yep.
It's going to be around noon on Wednesday?
We're going to meet at my office at noon, and then we're going to go over there for a couple hours, two, three hours. Yep. Spend our time on the 19th, walking around, talking, discussing. And yep, you definitely want to bring some repellent.
Not to drag this on too long, but one of the things we discussed at the meeting was like the former plans, right? Supposedly they were going to put a school there, you know, 20 years ago. Strikes me as odd that we wouldn't have some sort of information pertaining the suitability of this land to build. I haven't seen any yet.
I found some documents over the, well, the end of last week, right? I forwarded them. They're not maps or plans, but they do identify some of the contractors who did the water testing and the exploration, as well as the traffic studies.
Right, so anything that can be leveraged. I'm sure it's old enough that we'll still have to do it, but certainly anything that can be leveraged should be benefited.
Sandy?
We did identify some records that are in our off-site storage that Trey's going to go grab tomorrow. So I'm hoping that some of the stuff that you've been asking for at that meeting will be located in there. So hopefully I'll be able to share that with you guys this week.
Thank you. Great.
We understand there's a well on the property too, just so you know. You might want to look for those records.
Yeah, we found the name of the company that developed it, so. Because program and law were.
Ruben, can I ask a different question on a different subject?
Sure.
I hear rumors percolating through town about big changes at JGS in terms of classrooms and how things are going to be arranged. Can you give us some information about that?
Sure. I mean, well, classrooms will function like they have typical classrooms. What is going on there is, from a classroom standpoint, is that they're going to be, their schedule and their days are going to be done in what we call grade bands. So, grade bands, which means that rather than kindergarten doing its own thing and first grade doing its own thing and second and third and so forth all the way through and having five or six different types of schedules that try to evolve around each other, you'll have, you'll be cutting that in half so that your K and one group teachers and classes are all functioning in one way. Same thing with two and three and then four and five. That doesn't mean that they're multi-aged classrooms, although there will be opportunity for some of that to take place. It's designed so that the group of individuals, the, let's say in the past, they've worked together as kindergarten teachers, two or three of them, and first grade teachers have had another time if they met together to talk about things. Those individuals would now team up and work together to look at all of those individuals, look at data and say, "How can we group and regroup these learners?" You know, with looking at their understanding of content, perhaps their physical and emotional needs. And it could be different times of days that they're making plans, but it's stressing the importance of collaboration and flexibility within our thinking. Also flexibility and, I would say, collaboration within instruction as well. So a piece of this is that every grade band has a special educator and a Title I professional, or interventionist, I guess you could say. And so those individuals will also be on that team, be also part of the planning of all that goes on. But we'll start to, and it won't happen all at once, but start to work on pushing into the classes more rather than pulling kids out of the classrooms more, so a little more co-teaching going on. And we discussed a little bit a while back, even last year, trying to get some co-teachers in there from the special ed side of things as we have difficulty finding large numbers of paraprofessionals. And the model that, at least in the secondary level, that's research-based to yield results, is a good co-teaching model. There's not as much research at the elementary level, largely because it's not the model that is typically used either. We have however, just hired an individual for the four or five team as a co-teacher in the area of special education that will replace some of the positions that we can't hire, but also will be putting some professional development into that particular grade band in order to make it really function. That grade band, because of some new things that it's trying out, subject matter-wise really and schedule-wise, is really the group that is best ready to try some of that out with the special education department. Oh, there's a lot here. The, there's certainly an element of STEM that is being piloted. That also goes within the fourth and fifth, so there are two pieces that are important to note around that and things are in the works. So I wrote a grant for the Jaffrey Ringe Education Foundation, to the Jaffrey Ringe Education Foundation. Myself and Ashley Flamino wrote that to work on getting Project Lead the Way, which is what we already use in the secondary school in, for professional development. Use some of the resources. It's expensive, so we'll probably unlikely use it all. And it may not be the best inquiry-based material that we want, because we want, we do want to improve on inquiry. But the, but it does give a reputable solution to start off and make sure that pre-K through five, the individual who's working in that capacity is being able to do what she needs to do. And so, we're excited about that. That will also help us with some curriculum development, especially in the fourth, fifth grade area as well. All of that curriculum development has to work across both schools, and so we have some planning that we need to do in order to work on when that's going to happen. And when I mean my curriculum development, curriculum's a very big word. So, talking about really foundational documents and, and learning goals and things of that nature for, when you consider, when you're talking about both schools. The other, and we have been told, we've been informed that JREF is going to give us $4,000. I don't have an official letter to present to you, otherwise, I mean, I talked to them last week, for professional development and for some supplies for that piece. We also got a PLTW grant that paid for all of the Project Lead the Way professional development and the system for two years that they, that they use. So that's already part of us for a school. We can apply for that if we want to do that later on down the road for, say, RMS or whatever. We can do that again. We'd have, we'd have a high likelihood of being able to get that. There's, in conversations with JREF, again, the Jaffrey Ringe Education Foundation, they are requesting that I split the grant up into two separate grants, so we might be able to get a couple thousand more, for instance. But we've won the $4,000 for the STEM implementation because it focuses on, it helps with the whole innovation. And then one piece focused on a partnership with FPU, reviving and then expanding a partnership that we used to have in all of our schools, which was the Inquiry Scholars. So, so to promote inquiry. That doesn't have to be just JGS, it's just, but it would be part of that grant to make sure that we can do that. We can also do that here at RMS. We can do that at the secondary as well, but for the purposes of trying to create a sustainable partnership and perhaps another solid MOU with the college, that's what they're asking us to do. JREF doesn't have a lot of money to give, but it's a, it's a group that was designed to help our district if, with innovation. And so we have gone to them and they've been really good to work with. They have also requested that not in this district or community-wide communication, but in the next community-wide communication, that we advertise out there for people who, talk about what JREF is, what their mission is, what they want to do, and try to get other people who, in the community, who maybe have younger children on there in schools, to be able to join that. who maybe have younger children on there in schools, to be able to join that and fundraise and, and create a sustainable, more robust funding mechanism for the district to be able to continue to innovate in all of its schools. So that's some of the work we're doing behind the scenes with, with that, with JGS. From a structure standpoint, parents can pretty much assume that it's going to be fairly similar to what is their kindergarten's kindergarten, first grade's first grade and so forth. The only one that is going to be, look different from a mixture standpoint right off the bat is your four or five. Those four teachers that are there will, while there will be grade five, say, mathematics at times and grade five science at times. And again, still be fairly similar to what there was. Their morning meetings that they're going to have, other times of mentoring or anything like that. Maybe there are times with some intervention periods and so forth will be mixed from the beginning. And a lot of that's strategic with the group to make sure that the groupings work well with one another from, from what they already understand to be true with how different personalities, different interests and so forth gel. They're, they're interested in having a pretty solid year. You know, they had, there were some difficulties within some of the, I would say homogeneous grade, grade groupings that they had last year. Because JGS is not a big school. It does sometimes have, you know, two sections of one area. It's, it can sometimes be difficult. Yep.
Thank you.
But I'd be happy to, if, if anyone ever wanted, we can do a much larger presentation as we get closer. I'm sure the principal, Deanna, would like to be part of that conversation. Right now, we're just knee-deep in the facility, moving that stuff around. But all the K one will be in one wing. All the two, three will be in another wing. Four, five will be where it has been, but up in, up in one wing. Unified arts are all clustered in an area except for library and PE because they have, they're not moving their locations. But everyone else is clustered together. The schedule allows or promotes more integration and collaboration. I don't expect that that's going to take off right away. But there are a couple that are already working on that process of seeing what they can do with their learners. So they have some flex time with, if they need to have, if they want to have 35-minute classes with, say, pre-K or kindergarten, they can do that. If they want to have hour-long classes, they can have that as well. If they want to, I don't know, put on, if, if this is an idea, okay? It's not something that we have at all talked about, but just the idea of, for instance, the Unified Arts group, and I'm calling them Unified Arts and not specials, because I don't believe that they're specials. I don't think they're expendable. I don't think they're extra. I'm not going to be promoting that we get rid of anything in, in a budget, because I actually think that those subject areas that promote creativity and complex reasoning and collaboration more naturally perhaps than some of the other ones do in a way that they're traditionally taught anyway, are necessary for our kids to be well-rounded and, you know, kids who thrive in their lives and communities later on. But again, we can take those, act, those areas and improve them even more. And so for instance, if you had music and you had PE and you had, I don't know, technology, let's say, and well, let's take library, all right? So what if they put on a play? What if they said, all right, we're going to take a grade band and we're going to, we're going to work on drama, right? And we're going to do the music, we're going to do musical, we're going to have choreography over here or dance. We're going to have a section over here of technology where we're learning how to broadcast and do that sort of thing. And then you have, of course, the library literacy, you know, piece of that. You know, I don't, could that happen? It would take a lot of work, but something like that could take place and they'd have the ability to do that with all the kids that they wanted to at the exact same time. And do that through semester or quarter. So it's giving possibilities and that's where we're at. And we'll try things out and we'll make mistakes and we're going to make some errors and that's okay, because we need to, you know, try.
Wow. That's a lot. That's busy, Ruben.
It's, we bit off a lot, so we have a little bit of work to do. Yep, and that's okay. It's, it's, it's fun and every school's working on something different. So in different places. Since it's my report time and we have other, we have so much going on. We also are, as you, as you know, we started to do a pilot for the, last year with the evaluation system. I would say it wasn't super awesome. It was hard to get going. We do have a desire to work with the association again to enhance that, to change up some things and to make it a little more widespread. How that would be defined, we're not sure yet. But there is universal, at this point in time, interest in moving forward to make something that is going to promote well, what we were just talking about, more collaboration, more growth within individuals, better environments to teach, but also better entire environments for students to learn as well and for staff to learn, right? When we talk about all learners thriving their lives in community, that's every single person here as well. Not just the individuals that are, you know, the, the kids who are coming into our pre-K through 12 grade span. So there's some work that has to be done with regard to that.
And you say that this is, the focus now on JGS, but that both schools, both grade schools will.
Yeah, well, the, the two communities are different, right? They have different needs. So, and you have, I mean, even, there's not, there's actually a lot that's, that's just not overly similar. In the sense of, obviously we have two communities that we've talked about that are a little dissimilar from even a socioeconomic standpoint and the way that, that things are worked out that way, which is why Title I funds and everything go over to JGS. You have a faculty here that by and large is very veteran. They've been together for a long period of time. You have a school over there that used to be that way and then four years ago hit. And they are 50% non-continuing contracts, right? So the things have has shifted, yeah. There's, and that's just a little bit of the shift. So there's a lot of shifting that has taken place. And we're also trying to capitalize on the, some new staffing that we have for administration at the elementary schools. And really, I mean, we have the principal of RMS here tonight, but you know, the, the hope is as we go down the road here that whether the two schools look identical or not, that's probably never going to take place. We want their curriculum to be aligned. We want to have them all working on the same sorts of core best practices together. And we want for, even though we have two principals and a couple other administrators that go back and forth, you know, we really want to look at them as one team. And then piecemeal the secondary and say, yeah, we have another school over here. One team, one district team with kind of a seamless approach. Again, doesn't have to look the same. It's, it's unlikely that's going to be the case, but we can learn from one another. And if we take risks here, then we can learn it, you know, we learn at another place and vice versa. We've learned a lot from the secondary school as they've made some changes over the last several years. And so there are some things that certainly they're doing well. And there's a lot of mistakes that they made that they can help us not make as we go down the road within the areas of curriculum or assessment or anything of that nature. And they're still very much in a growing point. I think all schools are looking at restorative practices right now. And so that's an early conversation. You know, it's happened a little bit more here at RMS and probably the the secondary level a little bit more. And the, but then all of, both elementary schools are working on responsive classroom and multi-tiered systems support and trying to make sure that language is common across all of the, the grade levels and so forth. And there's just a lot of work taking place right now across the district and it's all good. So shout, shout out, because I do have Nikki here. The, the best mascot in the district right now is visited. And I think is probably housed here somewhere, but visited RMS toward the end of the year. The mascot here is an eagle and there just might happen to be a mascot eagle here with feet, which is the coolest.
No giveaways?
I don't, I'm just saying, it might, it might be there. And I think so, I think you'll see it sometime, I'm sure throughout the year and probably on our social media. Yeah. Oh, another thing that's happening here is, and actually Nikki, you've been nice to go over to JGS with May as well. We have a, is it okay to say, okay? We have, we have a, we have a full-time, basically, employee, not getting paid, volunteer, totally volunteer, therapy dog here at RMS. Yeah. Some of you may have met her, May. Yep. And Boone Field, I believe, has helped. Am I correct that they, they have helped us with that process? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wonderful. I know when Boone Field Labs came into JGS that it was very positive.
Yeah, you'll probably have some other questions. I mean, I have, I'm sure I have a lot more, but those are the things that are going on right now.
Thank you for the updates.
Yeah.
Well, shall we move on to our consent agenda? We have, in addition to the consent agenda, but also a subtraction.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda adjourned. I'll second.
Okay. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Daisy. Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the draft minutes for the June 19th school board meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. And thank you, Kim. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I'll stand.
Okay, so that passes five, zero, two. Thank you. And action items. Request to waive facility fees, Jeffrey Recreation Department. Okay. So we have a copy of the waiver request. Does somebody want to speak to this?
Yeah, I spoke with Heather Lindstad today. Of course, this is really the topic of so much of our conversation that we've had this year, specifically with that karate outfit. And so we have done some digging and found out kind of what the financial relationships are with this program and with the recreation department and with the school. Basically, the karate business does end up paying for the usage of the facilities. They pay the recreation departments, even though they're utilizing our facilities. So that's what we suspected was the case, which is why when we had those categories, we talked about, well, we have the recreation department, there's a category, let's say five. I don't remember which category they are, but let's pretend that's the five, that it doesn't have to pay. And then you have either another non-for-profit or a business that then suddenly that they have to pay the school district, but they go through the lens of this organization and then suddenly, we, we don't know. That being said, we have agreed to develop memorandum of agreements with both communities. Neither community has budgeted for a loss in this area. They, I don't think it is, and I mean, as much as it bothers me how this all takes place, I also think that we need to work with our communities and make sure that prior to the budget season that we have coming up and their budget season, that we have memorandums in place where there is a different type of funding stream that helps pay for our facilities and upkeep. Right now, the recreation departments, you know, certainly they have a budget, but a lot of that budget is in getting some other types of revenue. This is a steady revenue stream for them. They would not have planned for any sort of loss, let's say $5,000 even, to the school district that doesn't go to them, is going to make a much bigger impact on them than it is going to on us for now. But we certainly want to go and rectify the situation later. I, because of that, I recommend that we waive the fee for this year right now. We, we will, however, not necessarily give them the prime real estate of, you know, we, our programming is going to take precedence over that. So if, you know, sometimes it may not be in the spaces that they would necessarily always prefer.
So we're already looking at this, looking for September. I don't know if there's conflicts with anything Heather was doing or not. But who's going to take point on these MOAs and get them in place? We talk about them a lot, but we need somebody to drive that effort. And who would that be? Yeah, very good question, John. What's your thinking, Ruben?
We have an MOA already with the police department, so we have a, a shell or an example of that. We have some MOAs or MOUs. It could be memorandum of understanding or agreement, it's the same thing. With Franklin Pierce, so there's some language around that. We have them with Keene State. We, so we have some models. I do think the town, it would look a little different than some of those because of the legal language and so forth. So we're well aware of that. I'm supposed to be meeting with Heather soon about, about that. Who would take point? Initially, probably myself, I'd probably pass it off. I got to find the right person to pass it off to. They're not hard to develop. I mean, if it's going to be with the town managers, for instance, if we're doing it with just them, then it makes sense that it would be myself. But if we are going to have lots of groups of individuals have to meet in select board meetings and have to do a lot of collaboration, then I will have to find someone else to help with some of those meetings.
So my preference, I'm just sharing this.
Yeah.
My preference would be that you get sign off from Dan Venus and Cole Morgan and whoever the town managers are, because they want to know you, you know, we're using their space and they're using our space and all that stuff. So I would like to see something like that in place by the end of August, if possible. Because we're going to start heavy use of those facilities in September.
Yeah. Yep.
And so this, this year, what we're talking, I don't know, is this to cover, like, I know we're talking about karate, but the rec department is going to charge karate to use our facility?
The rec department, that's, that's one way of looking at it. So the other way of looking at it is that the rec department offers a youth karate program to the community of kids. And by organizing that and using it, they have an agreement with the karate group to get some money so that, for the, to pay for the rec department services of organizing and overseeing all of the rec program and so forth. So it's, that's a revenue stream for them. Practically speaking, yes, they're not using town property to do it. They're using the school property. However, one could take the logic path of saying, well, we share these, you know, you use our fields, we use your gyms once in a while. So in a sense, you know, when you're using our fields, it's, it's kind of like your property. When we're using your gym, it's like our property. And so you can think that way and come out with it being all okay. The reality is it, it takes a lot more to upkeep our internal, our gymnasium because of the dirt and the wear and tear. Any, any of our internal facilities just takes so much more effort and, and money to keep them up. So it's, it's not apples to apples. But this is a longstanding practice. This is, you know.
So this negotiation.
This is a negotiation right now. Yes.
Whose budget these things go into, like, if we have to provide a, someone to be present when they're in a gym.
Yeah.
Okay, or a vetting process or what, all that?
Or a cleaning process where it's all got to be spelled out. And you're right, it's a negotiation that has not happened yet.
Right.
And somebody's got to put in their budget. Agree to come to the table for this. And that's where we're at.
Yeah. And I think if we don't do it in that timeframe, we're going to be looking at these every school board meeting. Yeah, start September and I don't know, I don't think we all want to be like, oh, basketball, karate, you know? I don't think that's good use of our time.
It's not.
No, but the whole point of revamping the system was so that the school board did know who, what outside groups you're using. So no, I do want to see, I want to know if the system's going to work. I want to make sure we're monitoring who's using it. And for a long time, it hasn't been seen by anybody.
Well, and there's a link to the conversation we had earlier with this, because this is a community conversation. And we, you know, we have to learn to get along and move forward. We have to learn to collaborate, deal with some uncomfortable conversations and then move forward for the betterment of the entire community. It's not this similar from the conversation that we're having with the Route 202 project as well and how we can use facilities, use funding, use our resources in this community to better our community for not just now, but for many years to come and hopefully generations to come, thinking about the future for Ring and Jaffrey.
With that in mind, I, I confess, I wish that the language had been changed when we updated the policy to reflect the current policy, showing old information on the waiver is unfortunate. And I think it sends a message that we're not following through, because it was uncomfortable. So where it says priority six or seven route to request, that's no longer the case. We changed the priority numbers. And so that's unfortunate, but that didn't get reflected in the waiver. I hope that that can get addressed. It should say groups in priorities four and five, or just say groups in municipal and community services, groups four and five. But that should be reflected with the change we made. I know it was a very recent change we made. It's just, this was a, this was a hot ticket and this shows that we weren't following through.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve a waiver for Jaffrey Rec Department for September 11th, for the karate.
Who's karate? I thought this was after school karate.
After school karate.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. And thank you, Lisa.
So this waiver just kind of says that they can keep doing their doing this year, but the next year we have to re-figure this out.
memorandum of understanding that covers all this. And this negotiated is, Ruben said that, all of these issues including cost and safety and staffing.
So one thing I noticed on the last waiver that the board approved was there wasn't any sort of like end to it. And I feel like that could also lead to some potential ambiguity. I'm wondering, because I don't see anything, I don't remember there being anything in the policy. This is a waiver is effective for a certain amount of time. So I don't know if the motion should perhaps reflect that because last year's motion that we made doesn't have that. So I don't really know if people know that they have to come back to make that change.
Well, it says it begins, and I think that there's so many classes that have, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, but I would say that, that I would amend the motion to include the initial and all following classes in the fall. Okay, thank you.
Did you say, just wait, can I ask, just in the fall?
No, I don't think it runs all year long. There's only so many sessions for a certain period.
It runs through.
And hopefully if it lasts longer than the fall, we'll have an MOA.
Okay, well, it does run through or into May or it, it runs in the spring.
Runs all year long?
All school year long.
It's, it's an all school year long program.
Okay, I think even limiting it to that in the language might be important because someone could assume that this is good, like, forever in perpetuity, right? Karate's approved.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good, a good idea. I'm thinking like whenever the connects budgets, I don't know when the town budget kicks in.
Town's budget is going to be in March, the same as ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say for the 23, 24 school year.
Okay.
Yep. Unless otherwise determined by, you know, an MOU or something.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead and, you know. Okay, if there is no further discussion, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None? So that's seven zero.
Who was it that seconded that motion? I didn't catch that.
Lisa. Okay, great.
Just another little bit of information before, as we go along. One of the items that we're writing in the Route 202 history section of this document is that, and I thought, I was a decade off this entire time. I thought we purchased, the district purchased the property in the late 90s. 1989. This, this district has had that land for a long, long time.
15 years before that final 2014.
So over 30 years. This is just an interesting piece of information.
Yeah. All right.
It's been growing wood. It's been growing wood.
Yeah.
Yeah. And ticks. And providing snowmobile trail fun for people. Well-maintained trails.
A pretty good road.
Yeah.
Permanent substitute pay rates?
Yeah, so permanent substitutes. So several years ago or a couple of years ago now, we've had, we started to dabble with the idea of having permanent subs. Individuals who could be in the building who could substitute for a wide, a wide array of positions from being at the front desk to welcome people in the morning, to doing attendance, to substitute teaching, to carry, substituting for a paraprofessional with a, you know, one-on-one, basically to go around to just about any area that we needed support. And we put into place a document that was, would start them at 19 an hour. So it wasn't at the highest end, because we're also trying to be understanding of our other, our negotiated units as well. But it was not at the, the lower end as well, and we needed to attract some people. There are benefits involved. It's about a school year timeframe. Right now it's 177 days. We could explore that later, later on. However, we've had a couple of individuals within this mix who have wanted to continue, but have not seen any sort of pay rate because we have it defined as 19 an hour. And so things, you know, as we know, have gotten a lot more expensive for people to live and we have some good workers. We don't have a lot of individuals in these categories. We might have, I think we have one per school building, so two over at the secondary level. Sometimes they're, maybe they have three people, but it's because they have, they share part-time positions to make a full-time position and you have one at the great, grade school right now. I think probably all our schools could use more of them, but we, you know, certainly have not budgeted for that. But the individuals, like I know we have an individual here who has been doing a, a great job here at RMS, for instance. We have, you know, people who, we'll have new people at the high school and so forth. We probably have someone at JGS who's been here for a while, for a couple of years. But was hoping that we might be able to give them some sort of an adjustment. So for people who have already been in our system for a full year and are coming back, if rather than paying them 19 an hour, which is what they have been getting, if we could raise that to 1960 an hour, which is about a 3.1% increase, unless the board wanted to go like to 1975, which is about a 4% increase. But I think that the reason why I chose a 3.1% because it mimics one of our collective bargaining agreements that is going to be up for negotiation this coming year. So it's not putting it higher than that group. And then of course, the reason why I wouldn't say go more than four is because that also interferes with another, you know, bargaining group that we, we have as well. So, but I originally was thinking like 50 cents, which was a nice round number, 1950, but that's like a 2.5%. So I felt like a 3% at least was warranted.
Have all the schools been able to have those last year?
Mm-hmm.
Has this been an effectual?
Do you, board chair, mind if I ask a member of the audience to speak on that?
No, please.
Okay. Nikki, would you be able to speak from your perspective?
Yeah, from the perspective here at RMS, the person and lately, so you got positions in the building, people. But currently, the person that is in the position here at RMS is absolutely incredible. And she does every role at any moment, sometimes multiple roles in bed. We had some situations here this year where we had staff that needed to be out for long-term absence. And we were not able to spread long-term staff. That person seamlessly stepped in. And she's actually going to be here early in the office this summer. She's working pep camp and she is fully committed to our district. I think every student here knows her in the building and she is very much part of our team. And makes the days here at RMS. What everyone students, staff, administrators, the main office, run much more smoothly. If we could just run it through her like a cookie cutter machine and have like multiple of her, that would be good, but she is. You couldn't do without it. She's incredible.
And I know that the other schools, the principals and assistant principals at the other schools are indicating if we could have more, we'd love to have the continuity and like you said, the relationships that are being built rather than, you know, they, they come to know what each teacher expects and can adapt very well. So, which is what we had anticipated would take place. And so obviously it does depend on, you know, getting the right type of fit, but it has been beneficial. It's a, it's an expensive model to say all of our substitutes are going to be that way. It would probably be a more reliable model. But it may be down the road, that's what we have to end up doing as this crazy hiring world is, you know, what's going on. And especially in education and other fields that involve working for, you know, with people. But, um, yeah.
I just got a text from one of our teachers who wrote dinners, everything he said about Gloria. She's the best.
Yeah.
So we have RMS staff watching the school opening, our team in, and she's really helpful. She's loved by everyone.
So we, we, funded long-term subs or permanent subs because it was beneficial. We did four of them.
Yes.
All right. And then this past year, we also increased the substitute pay rates.
The, the regular substitute pay rates, yeah, pay rates, yep.
So my only question is a source of funds?
Yeah, it would be still out of the same source of funds. I mean, you're talking about, you're not, first of all, you're not talking about all four positions getting that because they haven't been here. So that would still be the same for anyone coming in new into the position. It'll be for those individuals who have been with us for at least a year would be getting, it's a, if you, if you go 60 cents, I'll give you the, the hard dollars. If you go, say 60 cents more, that's, that's $800 more throughout the entire year. So you're, if you go 75 cents, it's closer to a thousand more for the entire year. So you might be talking about with, with FICA and things of that nature, you're talking no more than really $3,000, $3,500, you know, perhaps maybe, maybe 4,000 tops. If you had, if you had three of them, for instance, for the, for the year. It's not, it's not something that would be very difficult.
So what's the number you want? 1960?
I'd love, I'd love 1975. I think 4% is appropriate for this specific time of year, but 1960 would be the lowest.
So, so would you want them all the same or you want up to or?
I would want those individuals who have been with the district for at least a year to have that 75 cent increase.
Make a motion that, or permanent substitutes.
Per hour. Yeah.
Been with the district. Yeah, see, with the language, it's more than, we want to say more than a year. Like, they were just here last year, so that doesn't really.
I would, yeah, I would like them to have been a, here a full year.
A returning employee?
A returning employee. That's fine. No.
So permanent substitutes who are returning employees to get a 4% pay rate increase? Help me with the language.
Can we say 75 cents? Because it's three, it's like 3.98%.
What is it?
It's like 3.98%. It's just a nice number. I mean, we can do 4% if you want.
It's $19.75.
73.5%.
$19.75.
Yeah.
$19.75.
Yeah.
Wow, thank you, Lisa.
I'll, I'll just do the math real fast.
Having a superintendent is a math teacher. Oh my God.
It's, it's, uh, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah. 3.95%.
Lisa, thank you. Thank you. No discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great, great. Now that passes.
Thank you.
Seven zero. Very good. Board committee updates. Any committees that have met since the last meeting?
We did, in education. I was the only one there. Anyway, it's good. It was actually big, a lot of people, but we're board members.
I blew it off. I just, my, my bad.
It's all good. We'll forgive you.
There were a lot of questions from the audience. That's all I remember.
Yes, there definitely were lots of questions. He was the only audience member. Anyways. Um, it was a great meeting, lots of information. There was, so we talked a little bit about the summer program that's going on and it is running smoothly, great. There's BEP, which is doing reading, learning, dress and math, ESY for IEP students. It's all kind of seamless. Great. They, they invited a certain amount of kids and within like one or two, they all came. So it was really good attendance. Um, it's a three-week program. It's going well. The only thing that they don't have this year that they've had in the past was food, that there's a lunch program. It was something strange that happened with ConVal. Not to get into the depths of it, because I'm not really sure, but in the future, we're looking into fixing that so that they can actually have food here, budget for that. Um, we did CMHS data. So exciting for you that you missed that. Sorry about that. But it was all good. There's a, um, there's a good slideshow on it to give you the information. And the last two slides are really cool because they kind of sum everything up on how it went. One was called key takeaways and the other one is focus areas for coming up, in the coming up year. So it was, just basic, real quick, there was a lot of testing scores and stuff. And ELA, it is kind of trending up. Wait, is that? Yep. And then math and science were a little bit down, but getting better. Um, and those are for, I believe that was for sixth, oh yeah, I'm looking at like, my notes are a little all over the place. Um, the grades, sixth through eight, right? It was six through eight.
Yeah, so the middle school either stayed the same or in some places dipped a little bit.
Little bit. That was more math.
There were pockets of, of increase in, in those areas. And yet the high school was seeing the growth in all areas, in those areas. And so that was, and the significant increase in people taking higher level math classes. It's doubled, so.
Yeah.
Can I ask, can I just like ask a quick question in that realm? As I'm remembering, there was a huge phone book issue with the middle schoolers not getting phone books for testing for a lot of the time, like not having a timely way of actually doing the testing that this was based on. That's, that's correct, right? But that was all piece. But that was all piecemeal because there weren't enough phone books and the high school had precedence on that?
Yeah, I actually don't think the high school had what it needed either, but they did. By the time the state assessments took place, they had them. There were still a few glitches here and there, but by and large, they had what they needed. They did not have them for some, um, of the, well, specifically the secondary schools and and the middle school, um, in particular, started to do interim assessments uh, so that they would be able to find out, you know, where they're, they were at different parts of the year relative to the end result of of the end goals, um, as defined by the state anyway. And, yeah, they ran into, uh, very large problems because everything was out of date. So, wow, yeah.
Is that a dress now? I know we purchased more.
Yep, they're all, it's all set.
Enough day one?
Yes. Yep, we're in good shape for last year and this year, and we're back on track with the cycle.
Thank you. Excellent. Um, oh, basically just kind of tell talks about two, six to twelve, they're really in good shape with their education goals. Social studies, I heard, was in really like excellent shape. They're starting to work on, um, uh, planning like six to twelve, like bigger planning. So it was kind of neat to see that. Um, science needs a little bit of work. Um, but everybody's got goals in place and to kind of trend up in all those areas. And then we did have an MTSSB update. However, it it's, it's kind of becoming a lot of repetitive information. And, um, everything that we've talked about that I've updated for along the way is actually being put into place this coming year. So that is like this, a complete, as he was talking a little bit about earlier, that's like a complete overhaul over at JGS. And that behavior program that, um, David Fraser's been working on is like all its moving pieces are coming together over there now, and so they're going to be able to implement the whole program. And so that's like something really big, but he's not going to have a lot to, to give us until he's in it for a little while. So he's actually asking, and we've talked about how we're meeting a lot, so hopefully he can do more of a meeting with us in December and then meeting with us in the end of the year instead of the amount of meetings that we're having so far, because he's not gonna have as much to give us. Because he needs to kind of get some data collected and whatnot in order to give us more information on the program. So if it's okay with us and everybody that it's, we will do another meeting with him in December and then one at the end of the year to kind of give us more information.
Sorry, can we?
Uh, David Fraser about the MTSSB, um, behavior program that's going on. And I just, like you said, a lot of the changes in Jaffrey, I guess this is part of it. And there's just a lot going on.
Yeah, it's happening everywhere, um, across the entire, the system. It's just that one is more glaring. The shifts will be a lot larger and will actually take a little bit longer. Um, but the, but the structures that we've been talking about, the physical structure is also that is, you know, putting the, um, program in place. That's gonna obviously be starting for the first year, um, which is also for RMS as well. But just like the ILC here is for both towns. Um, but of course, we're starting off small there, but everything is going to have a place. You know, RMS is a little bit ahead of some of the, uh, in some of, as we, as it pertains to elementary, um, in some of the practices that it uses for perhaps some behavior supports. So, um, there's some work that is going to be done and changed around that over at JGS. And a lot of that work was being done last year, and the people who were in that area were great. They made a lot of big shifts. It's now taking another step.
Yep. So now to the next step. So I guess we'll just need to, I can, if it's okay to do the, you know, is it Daisy with us this morning? Yeah, so maybe what I'll just do an email and we'll get it to David if that's okay to do kind of a lesser of an update. And then our next meeting is August seventeenth at one. I see a question marks there, but as long as you guys can still do one. And then in September, we'll go back to four thirty. Just for the summer, then when I do one o'clock again.
So David did reach out to me and asked if I had any questions. I reviewed the slides. I had some questions about some of the cohorts, but that I need to, um, it was recorded, so I need to listen to his explanation. And then if I have any further questions, I'll get all of it.
I'm hoping to have that up in the next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, I would like to see that too. Would you mind forwarding when you do upload it? Could you just forward a link to the school board in general? That would be good. That's fine.
Yeah, and when I do that, whatever, um, slideshows are happening during the, um, course of the meeting or in the comment or in the description of the YouTube video. So anytime that you're watching it, if you want to actually click into those and examine them, they're right there. And they're just the PDF links. So like I said, hopefully within the next week, I'll have that up. I think the question mark on the date was that in addition to moving it to one, we also moved it down a week.
Oh, right.
Normally, we're second Thursday. We're gonna be third Thursday because there's the conference that Ruben was talking about. He was that, that week, or are they like all on vacation? There was a reason most.
On vacation. They were gone.
Yeah, most administrators won't be there, so.
That was right. They were away. They talked about that. So we moved it. That's why we moved to the seventeenth. I want to fuck that. You're right. That was the question.
Okay. The other committees.
Policy did not meet, um, we have to cancel. Um, and our next meeting is August third. And, um, we're, we're going in a direction that, um, that's rough. And, uh, so the policy that we're really working right now is in conjunction with some public, um, community input on, um, on our bully policy, on our policies for bullying. And so, uh, the conversations that we're gonna start bringing to the board will take time um, as we formulate what language we want to, um, have in our, towards this, that it's being informed by community members. And, yeah, it'll be, it'll be interesting. I will not, um, be here for our next school board meeting. I'm gonna take vacation time. Um, so, oh, you guys too. If we have something to bring forward to you guys, at least for conversation, we'll pass it off to the other members of the meeting. But it's interesting. And goals met. Uh, the goals committee met, had a good meeting, um, discussing, uh, where our strategic plan is. And, um, got some good input from the admin, um, on both where the individual schools felt they were on the master plan there, uh, and, uh, you know, what pieces still needed work. Um, so, yeah, that was, it's really exciting to be part of a living document on this. I feel like in some ways, policy, I'm constantly looking at, oh, three years ago, we have to, now we have to update this again, like it's a static thing and that we have to keep coming back to, which is, which is valuable. I don't feel that way with our strategic plan. I feel like this is a very moving, uh, yeah, moving document that we're just growing in. And so that's, it's kind of a neat. And we do not have a set meeting for our fall quarter meeting yet. I'm assuming once schools started and we see direction, we'll figure that out, um, probably in October, but we'll see.
Yeah, so by the end of August for policies, early September, we will update the document with the changes that we talked about with what the administration said, you know, where the, where they're at for, uh, kind of rating themselves, doing a self-assessment, uh, add a few things that are, um, new to the document but that are in line with everything. So making sure that, like, for instance, some of these changes that we discussed over at JGS that we need to actually put into the document and then, um, monitored for, for implementation purposes throughout the, you know, several years really. And then, um, as an example, and there might be something else that drops off, um, or that changes in how it's worded just because it didn't pan out or wasn't, wasn't really the right direction.
Finance is being, uh, first day and, uh, we're gonna review the, make some changes to purchasing guidelines and, um, perhaps a policy based on things that we need to do for the auditors. So once we make the change, suggested changes to the policy, we'll send that to the policy committee.
It's meeting after. And as, as promised, I will not be at the finance committee meeting.
I'm sorry?
I will not be at the finance committee meeting.
Okay.
I was threatened. Promised.
And I will try to, I may be down.
That's fine.
Lisa will be there. Good. Carrie will be there. Anything beyond that, we're fine.
Yeah.
Right. Any other committees?
The facilities committee, committee met today. Holy moly, so much is happening. It's crazy. Um, so we're still short-staffed, so I can, uh, in terms of custodian, in terms of maintenance, right? Um, JGS is cranking along. There's so much happening there. The new carpeting, which is not actually carpeting, is in place in the hallways and new flooring in the cafeteria. The vestibule exterior doors are done. Bathroom partitions are being worked on. The gym floor is done at JGS. The amphitheater is not done, but will be, um, done soon. The courtyard paving at JGS is finished and supposedly looks fantastic, and we're waiting for the sliding gate to be put in place. Um, rooms are being painting, painted and moved around. RMS has a new freezer. The high school has a new field irrigation system, which allows us to save a lot of money on filters. The high school, middle school, high school counseling center is getting new flooring and paint. The Pratt has beautiful new floors that I think we've all seen pictures of, and, uh, part of the Pratt will be painted. It'll be painted in stages in phases. Um, the daycare center is working, being worked on. There's new flooring. There's doors that are not quite complete. The playground equipment has arrived, but it has not installed. The mulch is there. The playground fence is there, but it's not been installed, so that's all very exciting stuff. And we had a fantastic review with EEI. Things are moving along. The HVAC system is moving along very well, and I believe all of the rooftop units will be in place today.
I think that's right. And they're gonna be out of the buildings by, I think it was August eighteenth. They will be finished, other than the switchgear, by September, the end of September, but they'll be out of the buildings by late, by late August. I think it was the eighteenth.
So much happening.
And we will have access to EEI for a year. I mean, not that they won't come back after that, but we anticipate that we'll be looking at, uh, you know, how the systems are working in all four, in all of our buildings. It's not unusual that there'll be places where it's working great, like it seems to be here, and other places where it isn't working as well. They, they did point out that making adjustments to the heating system is very doable. There are control systems, digital controls where they can increase hot water flow. That's not the same, though, with air conditioning or dehumidification, actually. Because you're really limited by your duck sizes and also whatever your unit is putting out. However, i- if we find a place where the dehumidification is particularly off from what we expect, there may be some negotiations that we want to have with, with EEI. Certainly duct sizes could be changed. It would be an expensive change, I would assume, but not out of the question if it's. Is anything?
Yeah, I think that captures it. I think the, one of the main takeaways that I had with the HVAC system, we, it's not gonna be perfect, you know, on day one. So to really encourage the feedback, so we can get it fixed in a timely manner, you know. So whatever the plan is around that with communicating with, you know, teachers and staff that it won't be perfect, you know, everything's not gonna, we spent a lot of money on it and everything's not gonna be right on day one. That's part of the process. There's gonna be, you know, they basically take the data and make a best estimate. And reality could be, you know, will be different than that. So they're gonna have to make some adjustments and they're, you know, on board for the next year. So I think we want to take, take advantage of that and make sure we kind of optimize the system as much as we can in the first year, right? You know, we also talked about preventive maintenance of the system. It's really important that I think, you know, certainly before they're done, we understand what the preventive maintenance on this is so that we, you know, can, can, can extend that useful life for as long as possible. So, yeah, overall, I thought it was a good meeting and it looks like there's a lot of, I mean, if you take a look at that list, it was what, two pages last month and now it's one page, so a lot of work getting done and, um, you know, the other thing is that we'll touch on in future meetings, I think, as far as developing that capital plan a little bit further. You know, we've, we're completing a lot of big projects. Doesn't sound that like there's a, you know, a ton of big projects imminent. So now is kind of a really good time to think about, you know, what the two, three, ten year plan looks like and start laying it out, you know, when we're not, you know, knee deep in a punch list of thirty four big projects going on. I know there's still gonna be a lot to do, but without those major like parking lot roof sort of things, now's a good time to look at what's next.
We also had an interesting conversation about the filters, um, the air filters that are being used, the particle filters or whatever they're called. Um, because now we are not so directly concerned or immediately concerned about COVID, but what happens? What fill filtration, if that's the right word, is being provided if there is another pandemic or a wildfire? And so we actually dialed down and looked up exactly what these filters are. And these are not medical grade filters that we're using, but they do capture a lot of gunk, bacteria. And, and my concern was because if you oddly, in May, we were concerned about wildfires here, and there were wildfires. So my question was, will these filter out smoke from wildfires? And yes, indeed, these filters will. So these filters, well, that we're currently using, will help keep our air clean for future pandemics, for pollutants and for wildfires. And I was really happy with that, that we are going to having, being able to provide our children with clean air and our, and our staff with clean air for whatever chaos might be coming down the pipe. Because we don't know.
I think they said that we, our current system, the one that's being replaced, use, uh, level eight filters. And this new system uses level thirteen. So it's quite an, quite an upgrade. And they mentioned that in medical facilities, they go even higher, they use a level eighteen. We could do that if we wanted. It would be a very expensive proposition because they're very expensive filters. But, but if you did have a need.
You know, for a short period of time, you could do that. We're saying the equipment would handle that.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's always reassuring.
Let's hope we don't have another.
Right.
You know, just, just trying to like, what, what's gonna happen next? What's it gonna be?
But, but we've made a major investment in our schools and so good for us to let, let our communities know that.
Yep.
All right. Well, if there are no other committees, then, uh, we are just about at the end of our agenda, folks. Board committee updates and then public comments.
All right, um, have some new people online, so I'll just go over that process real quick. Um, bottom of your screen, there's a little hand. You can press that. We can acknowledge you from there. I'll put the policy on the screen, just to make sure everybody's familiar. And then if making a public comment, first name, last name and town of residence. And then if making a public comment, first name, last name, and town of residence. All right, not seeing anybody.
Sandra and Nicole, thank you for being here. Do you have anything you'd like to add? Either of you?
I know. I'd say we're, we're all online and live with our HVAC system here, it's made a significant difference. And you can actually go upstairs and work with children, which is really wonderful, which, you know, come the middle of May, that's not, that can't happen, and with the heat and humidity we've had, it's delightful upstairs, so we're seeing a really remarkable difference here at RMS. So that's been great. And Ruben's talked about it a number of times in his update. The four elementary administrators, I think we're now a third week of working together, I don't know what.
Two and a half, or whatever.
And I think we've met now like three or four times. Those meetings have been really, really productive, very focused, and pretty exciting work, so I think there's great things to come and lots of excitement, lots of enthusiasm, lots of energy for the work we've got to do, so. It's really great. It's been a, it's been a productive couple of weeks already. Be fun to spend some time together later in the week in Boston.
Thank you. All right. Well, there being no public comments, no additional public comments. We need another motion. Maybe I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, thank you, Kim.
I'm showing the new air conditioning. I'm freezing, I'd like to go outside. What is going on?
It is kind of cold.
I like coming in, it's hot.
But quiet.
Yeah.
Right?
It's quiet.
It's quiet. Usually we're in these meetings and we can't hear things because of the noise behind us with the ventilators and so forth.
Right, we're making believe that we heard with somebody.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.